Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion that we approve the contracts as discussed.
Have motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can I ask some questions?
No.
For the last two, please.
Well, they have the same insurance.
I was gonna ask about that.
So, we can get you a copy of those contracts, which were on the, um, the insurance piece, they typically ask for five million. The policy we give is a four million, so I changed it on there.
Okay.
So, we're just letting it know upfront.
We just kinda wanna get it to Tim.
Yep.
Earlier this time.
For sure.
Okay.
So, there are, there are the next two that we can get to him.
Okay, great.
All right.
I think the next piece of business, if, if we're talking to Christie, then I'm gonna be part of that, too.
Yep, yep.
Um, Christie Gavelpore, Management Assistant. First, I would like to present and talk to you about the budget for the Independence Day celebration. Um, I've been working with Christie Klausert and Mandy Keller in auditing to put this together, mostly based on last year's expenditures and revenue. So, we would like to request that you approve up to $125,000 for this year's Independence Day celebration.
The budget has actually 150, but the meeting we had, we didn't think we needed that much. And then this is just giving the line items for you to review and approve, whereas during the budget process, you just do it alone, so that's the reason for the approval.
Yeah, and that's what I thought, that we'd already approved.
Yeah.
Up to 150, so, I mean, we're within that boundary. Any questions?
Nope.
Motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion that we approve the Independence Day celebration budget as outlined.
We have motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The second item I have for you is one that I brought to you previously about providing a contribution letter to the band that is going to be playing, or we would like to play, during the evening. Typically, they charge $3,000, and they have asked for 1,500 with the other 1,500 just being in the contribution letter for tax purposes. And previously, you asked that we find out how much the stage setup is going to be before you sign this. And so, Scott talked to Brad from Bolt Star the other day, and he said it would be $7,000. So, that's within our regular budget for that setup.
And we had the, the money donated for the stage last year as well, so.
Okay. Uh, I appreciate this, this, but it'd be nice to know the donations and contributions that have been put towards this also, so that we can just have a check and balance there.
I have a running spreadsheet that we are all working with, so I can get that to you if you'd like.
And some of those, some of those will come through in the sponsorship agreements that we do, because some of them are gonna go towards kind of Bannet County events, where they'll have a part in the concerts and a part in the Fourth of July. And that's one of the things that we're looking towards next year with our, with our budget request, is really just to roll the Fourth of July into a Bannet County event, just like all of our other concerts.
I thought we did it. I thought we did it the last year.
They're, they're still separate. They're just separate lines. Uh, and in the future, I think, I think it'll be an easy thing to just put them together. Then when we're going out talking to sponsors, we can actually just talk about the events. Uh, and it's, I think it's an easier and a better sell for us to go to a person and say, "You wanna be part of our events," instead of saying, "Hey, do you wanna be part of our concerts and part of our Fourth of July?" So, it'll just make things a little bit easier. Uh, but those agreements can come to you in the, in the form of the sponsorship agreements that we've typically filled out.
And that's why I'd like the balance sheet, as we're going to budget and talk about all these things, too.
Also, so you're aware, I have passed this letter through legal, so they, they're good with it.
They're good with it. Okay. Any comments, questions, motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion that we approve the letter as presented.
Have motion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Kyle. Foreigner Commission, Kyle Vermaester, um, Bannet County Public Works Director. I'm here to visit with you a little bit on the county snowmobile fund and the reconstruction of the operations of. With this reconstruction, I propose that we do all grooming, parking areas, and maintenance in-house with county staff. How we will do that is, we have staff at the weed department or mosquito department that we can help utilize them more in the winter. We'll have to set up pay code, um, when they do that work. We do that same thing with landfill and Roden Bridge. There's a separate pay code that pulls it out of that budget. Um, but I think we have the manpower to do that. We have utilized some of the weed, um, last winter to help with Roden Bridge with snowplowing, but then we just traded work this spring and helped them out for the same amount of hours, but.
Well, what?
It's clear to do it this way.
So, the Roden Bridge guys are doing noxious weed work, but coding it is Roden Bridge work?
It's, they're working on the road.
Okay. So, they're not doing noxious weed work?
Well, it's considered what you want to call it.
Different workers' comp codes is the problem. So, we might need to more appropriately code that work, because if one of your Roden Bridge guys is doing noxious weed work and only being paid as workers' comp for Roden Bridge, and then they get hurt, um, that might be an issue. So, we can't just wash hours depending on the work that's being done.
Okay. I don't really know what's the difference of working on the side of the road, though.
Let's talk about this after the meeting and talk about what they're doing.
Okay.
Um, there's just different rates for the different jobs that people do. So, if you're noxious weed or mosquito, those are different workers' comp codes.
Okay.
Now, if they're just mowing, we're probably.
Well, that's the thing, what's that?
Right.
So, in the past, we've mowed in one, and then we've mowed in Roden Bridge, and we're keeping it pretty well split up. It's just, 'cause then we'd have to really be splitting shop and everything.
They're not going out and spraying?
They're not spraying.
No.
Okay, that's all I needed. Thank you. I got into panic.
They're not going out and spraying.
Thank you.
The panic meter hit ten.
Yes, it did.
Back to grooming. So, that we'll use a code like that, um, to allocate what hours are going to that. Equipment-wise, that would be, I don't know where we would be with that, you know? I can, I can charge that easy enough. Or is it county equipment, and then so if a grader makes a pass through a parking lot, is that, do we need to code that 30 minutes, or what? I, I guess that would be one of the differences.
Well, we, we have different contracts with the Forest Service and with, I mean, so I don't know if, does that all come out of grooming?
Yes.
The Forest Service?
Yes.
For the record.
One, I think this could be a discussion we do during budget, um, to see if the numbers are gonna fit to do what. I'm not sure why we're having this discussion right now.
I think it's just preliminary.
To see if it's how we're gonna do the question.
It is a, well, Commissioner?
Just, um, this isn't preliminary. We may take action on this.
Well, we, we can't change line items and things until budget.
Right. But there's not, the snowmobile operation doesn't start until, well, what?
November.
November, okay. So, we, it's gonna be after budget. So, I'm not particularly concerned about how we're gonna code things. I'm sure you guys will work that out and get it all.
We'll have to work that out through the budget process and, and line items that we set up.
Exactly.
I think what we're here to do, though, is who's in a direction of who's gonna be working on that and trying to get that figured out the best before we hit budget.
Okay. So, we've got budget sheets, I think, both from the Snowmobile Road, Snowmobile Grooming Board, and also we've got budget sheets from you, that during the budget process, we were gonna work through both of those and see.
And this is a combination. It's more than just budget that we're, we're talking about here. And I'm gonna invite Mike, come on up. You're Chair, Vice Chair, right, of the?
Yes.
Snow grooming board? And so, there's more to this than just talking about this. We're talking about the, the board itself. What do we do with it? What, do we keep it as is? Do we disband it? And then reappoint people per, uh, direction that we'd really like this to go in the county? And, and so, that's, that's more of the, the big picture, the, the, if we put this under Roden Bridge, saying, because in the past, well, today, we had a $4,500 windshield replacement in the snowcat. Is that something that we can do in-house? I mean, could, would we have saved X number of dollars by doing some of these things?
I think Roden Bridge has already taken care of that equipment, aren't they?
Yes and no.
Not always. This is part of the reason we're having this discussion.
Got it.
That's, we had the meeting, and, well, this guy was a past member of the board, so we've taken it to Downey to get these things done. And, and that's, that's part of why we're having this discussion, is, is we've had some conversation with different board members and things, and we're not really happy with the direction that it's been going. And so, we want to.
Look at changes.
Focus on, on what this group is really meant to do and, and the purpose of it.
So, if Roden Bridge does the plowing, then we'll just add the line item like Kyle said. For the equipment, really, we only own the snowcat.
And we, we don't really own it.
Well, we don't own it.
We own the truck.
We use it through them, right? We use it through the Forest Service.
But we contract with the Forest Service on a lease for the.
But if we're using Roden Bridge equipment, I think it would depend on, if you're using Roden Bridge equipment for the.
Parking.
Parking lots, then that could be considered plowing, um, and could fall under Roden Bridge. And then it would just be the actual trails.
Yeah, the trails would be the groomer department.
Yeah.
All the maintenance would go for the groomer, would be still out of that grooming fund.
Just like today, we had parts and fuel.
I think.
Rebuild the, the different departments, and we'd do the same with the.
What we're looking at trying to do is, is like said before, is the maintenance gets done, like all county maintenance gets done. We don't have the confusion on whether or not the parking lot got cleaned or not, or something broke down and nobody got told about it.
Well, and with the contract with that groomer, it is not supposed to be used to plow the parking lot.
No.
I mean, that's in the contract, yet it.
Happens.
Happens regularly, and, and so, if we.
And some of it.
Had better control.
Be your department a little bit with, um, like coding the bills and stuff, so my office would do the coding.
Christie Gavelpore does that right now, so it'll be wa, that'll be a wash. So, really, the only change is gonna be salary and benefits, 'cause right now, we have a temp since Snowmobile. They'll be coded appropriately for workers' comp. That's why we wanna code things for where they're working, is because then workers' comp follows.
And Kyle, you've looked at the budget that we currently have for the snow groomer, and what is your thoughts on how well you guys can stay within that budget?
Um, I think we can be pretty well under it. It's dependent on two things, how much we charge for equipment of parking lots. It's kinda hard to know without doing it completely for a year on stuff like that. We, we kinda looked at the wages would be a difference. We're gonna save on the maintenance parts of things. With what we figured, 250 hours, it was 5,700. I didn't bring all the numbers with me today, but it's about 5,700 for the person that we were gonna have do it for 50, or 250 hours. Then you have your benefits added to that, and you've got some, so you have some that you pay the seasonal, but then they have the extra, like retirement and stuff. So, you're looking at it a little bit more than that.
Mm-hmm.
Wish the counties, and I don't know how that works, but wish the county's paying all year round anyway, so.
The retirement has to follow the.
Follow the code.
Where they pay, where they get paid.
So, there's a little bit more there, but looking at it, I thought we would be spending a lot more with one of our guys versus the temp, and it's not a lot. We're saving it on operational end, but.
And that's what we had this past year. I mean, we had the groomer break down, and we was waiting for Western State. Kept waiting, and finally, they brought it to you guys and cleared it, and, and then we groomed and then got the repairs done. But just, just in-house, I think would benefit a lot on the condition of the groomer, who's looking at it, what's going on. Uh, I know that the current groomer invests a lot of his own time that I don't think we'd pay for.
Which is a problem.
On, on going over to the shop, I mean, I don't, we don't know everything that happens in there.
Well, I've heard in the past that he works for free to keep himself under the, what is it, 32 hours a week?
I.
I don't think it'd be part-time.
120 a month, which is 19 hours a week, usually.
Yeah, I just heard that he's done some of that on his own, just so he can, uh.
Which isn't, isn't legal.
Keep that part-time status.
That's another problem.
You know, so, there's, we appreciate everybody's work and everything that everybody's done, but we want to improve. We've had a lot of concerns, and we want to improve this as we can. And I, I think that this is a good direction.
Hundred percent agree. I think, um, I personally feel like having this thing in-house is gonna clear up a lot of issues that have been recurring, and we keep hearing these over and over. We've had different complaints and so on. I think we need to have good control of this operation, if we're gonna ensure that we're delivering for the, the people that are paying for this, which is the people buying the tickets, that they're getting the service they deserve. And also, as you mentioned with the snow groomer, we need to keep that thing maintained, and I think having these guys do it is gonna be a big advantage in that regard. So, I like the idea of reorganizing this. We can do this with their own people. We maintain better control. Um, so for that aspect, and we can talk about the board here in a second if you want.
And that's when we talked about having this meeting. It wasn't just to talk about budget, it was the whole picture, so that everybody's on the same page.
Yeah.
As we move forward into that session, so we prepare the right way, so.
Just, Mike, you have just one thing. I talked to Kim Oldley the other day about, I've been working with the Forest Service, trying to get him to do something to expand the Inman parking lot, because it's kind of a disaster. And we got talking about the grooming, or the plowing out. She's, she said that she would love for somebody else to take over the plowing of Inman. She said, "Not necessarily Mint Creek." She said, "But it's, that's a thorn in her side." And I always kind of, when I talked to her, I thought I might hurt her feelings by saying something, 'cause we had mentioned last year, getting the contractor to do it. But I didn't, I thought it might hurt her feelings, saying, "Well, we want somebody else to do it." But she says she would, it would be a blessing to her to have at least Inman taken over. And I know that there's, what is it, 5,000 for five years, or is it 5,000 a year?
5,000. So, they're spending up to eight grand last year, but we have them locked in at five, and that's why she's wanting to kinda get out of it.
And we just re-signed a contract this last year with them.
Yeah, to do it this fall.
It's, it's locked in for three years right now, but it's a conversation we can have. And I, we had a conversation with the Forest Service last week also about expanding that parking lot up in, but, uh, and then actually, it's, it's challenging, because the parking lot that's up, what is it?
Crystal Summit.
Crystal Summit is actually not in Bannet County. It's in Power County. So, we have a lot of people going up there and doing unlawful things that we have no authority with, to have Power County come over and try to take care of. So, there's some challenges in all of them, but, uh, but there is conversation about the parking lots. And I think as we open this up and, and Bannet County assumes more responsibility, that we'll look at everything there is with it, all, all contracts, and so.
So, do we need, uh, do you have anything else you wanted to, Commissioner Huff?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions, but it's more related and process-related, so we're ready to move into that.
Um, as far as authorizing them to reorganize, as far as taking, for, for him to take over the snow groom, do we need a motion on that, or?
We, we need to talk to legal and, and see, because actually, we would void the current members of the board, in my opinion, and then retake applications and, and then reappoint.
In reading the statute, which now's a good time to jump into that, in reading the statute, it just says, "We may appoint a committee." It's not necessarily a board.
Yes.
It says committee. And so, I would agree that to move forward, we disband the board as current, repost it as a, an advisory committee. And then we talk about how the committee can work with the county to make sure we're, we're meeting the needs of who they're supposed to serve and the customer service. So, I, and as I, again, just reading that, that's what I wanted to talk about, is how would you envision that relationship, Kyle, between the advisory, again, making the assumption we move forward, the advisory committee and your department?
Um, kinda doing it, working it the same way as they have, is starting in November, and whether we go to March or whatever, like it's been done in the past, once a month, get together. They'll be able to call my office whenever they want. It'll kinda keep, 'cause we're kinda involved and kinda not, and it's just kind of a lot of people involved, like with the Forest Service and everything. It would kinda clean that up a little bit to where we're always open, just like with the road situations, to answer calls and take comments of what's going on, our staff. It frees up a little bit for you guys to where you have a clear line of what's going on with it, but to still take, to still work with them and take advisement of, you know, what they're seeing and.
Okay.
But their support to get tickets sold and trails maintained good, you know, seeing what's out there.
Mike, how would you feel about that type of relationship, that, that shift?
I, I would welcome that. I think it'd be nice to have somebody that we can actually rely on to, to get it done. And like Kyle says, they're open 24/7, so as far as, you know, having any special requests, I don't think so. I, I think that it would be a good relationship. I know, um, in the past, county has helped out in the parking lot when we've had some trouble with the Forest Service, because we did have, uh, our month of the end of December and the first part of January this last year, the plow truck for the Forest Service was down for a whole month.
Right.
And that's when we just got dumped on and dumped on. And every time you went to Inman, there'd be people on the radio saying, "Don't go to the parking lot, there's too many people stuck." And, you know, it wasn't the Forest Service's fault that their stuff was broke down, but it should would've been nice to say, "Well, the county's got it taken care of." So, I, I think it would be good.
Okay. And then, follow-up question procedurally, um, what type of special training, or is there special training required for the groomer? And then are you prepared to have the groomer operate at night? Because I think that's been an issue in the past.
So, we would be operating it on the correct time. It'll be late evening into the night, so it gives it time to freeze and hard enough. We, I've already talked to, um, Pebble Creek, and a couple of their groomers are willing to come as we start up in the winter, ride, help, volunteer. Um, I know them very good up there, and they're glad to help. So, they're all ready for somebody to train us on right ways to do things and what they see, and, um, help them that direction.
Condition those guys come down the hill, I don't think we'll be handling that, that type of terrain.
Yeah, they should, it should be a little easier than theirs, but how that groomer's supposed to work, you know? And if they see things that might be fixed or something, to basically, we have staff that run a lot of equipment, so we have the expertise in equipment, but not that specialty. So, a little bit of training in that, but it'll be great.
Good. That's all I had. I, I like the direction.
And, and to finish answering your question, I think that, that we'll talk to legal, make sure, you know, because of the way we're disbanding, what we're plowing, doing and stuff, that we.
Yeah.
We cross our Ts and dot our Is.
And I agree with everything Commissioner Huff said. I think this is gonna be a, a much better direction to go, get an advisory group together who, uh, so, that actually rides the trails, sees it regularly, is interested enough in snowmobiling to promote the selling of the tickets and so on, which is what funds this whole thing. So, I think this is a very positive direction.
In the interest of moving this along, could we make it a general motion pending, uh, legal approval, so that it's, we, everybody knows we're traveling this direction, and we're just waiting for a final blessing from legal?
I don't have, I don't have any problem doing that. I don't see that one advances it more than the other, but, but if you.
I, I would just kinda like it to be on the record that that's the direction we're traveling and going. John, since you're kind of over that, if you wanna make that motion?
Uh, yeah, so I'd make a motion that we authorize Kyle to move forward with all the plans he's laid out with respect to taking over the grooming operations, that we disband the current board and set up, and then take applications for a new board, that would be advisory to Roden Bridge with respect to the snowmobile grooming, uh, pending legal consultation.
So, we have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. We have a direction.
I'd like to make one more comment, if I could. I did contact Parks and Rec in Boise, and they said in Bannet County, we sold 942 snow machine stickers at $45 apiece. That's $42,390. And I guess my point is, is there's a lot of public interest in this, and I know myself and a couple of the other board members encourage people in the Inman parking lot to buy their stickers to support our program. And there's people up there that would refuse to buy a sticker to ride a trail like that. So, the interest is there, and I think we can get more than that. If people, if you take them up there and show them a nicely maintained trail, they are definitely more apt to buy a sticker and follow the rules and help support our program.
And, and I'll just say that I'm not a snowmobiler. Kyle is, so that's a good move right there. Uh, the second fact is, is that's, that's a tough area to groom. I mean, like everybody always says, you got two miles in, that everybody follows the exact same path for that time period. And so, I, I, it has its own challenges. I'm, I'm not saying that this is gonna cure everybody's wants and needs. We can, we, we never do that, no matter what we do, but we're trying and we're moving forward.
So, I think it's definitely a positive move, especially grooming at night. I'm in touch with the surrounding counties, Tri-County. They have hundreds of miles of trails in Caribou County, Franklin County, and Bear Lake County, and they groom at night. Number one, it's a safety thing. I don't know how many times people have said they come around a corner, and there's a humongous machine right in their face, and they're doing 25 miles an hour, and there's several 90-degree, degree turns up Inman. So, it's a safety hazard, having to do it during the day, but no matter what we try to do with the committee to get him to do it at night, he groomed at Inman one time, even after you recommended that he groom it at night. He did it one time at night, and that was it.
Well.
All right?
If we do this event, I will need to do the celebration. The groomer, when we're ready to do that, just keep that one.
Just keep that in mind.
Okay. We can do that. All right, thank you.